Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just form.
Graham Cassoon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Summers is absent. Witt?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Massey is absent. President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, two more minutes.
We have two minutes tonight. It's the common council meeting August 1st and also the common council meeting August 16th.
Motion to approve both minutes. Almond Johnson, seconded by Alvin Racozum, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
We received a subdivision application for Highland Avenue Extension, which is Highland Hills LLC.
What are the planning?
We also received a liquor license, full liquor license application from the SLA for 7 Canal Street.
What are the police department?
We received a letter from Francis Emilio resigning from the Civil Service Commission.
Received and filed?
That is all for correspondence.
Okay, correspondence. For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address this council, please step forward.
Good evening, Pat Fode. This is my teleprompter. I want to tell the mayor, the council, and the people that live in certain areas in the city of Middletown to be aware of a rancid-smelling, toxic-type chemical odor. This odor travels like a polluted cloud of air that travels low to the ground in the direction of the wind. Seven days a week, 24 hours a day. It seems to be heavier than air and it does not disappear in the atmosphere. Most of the highest concentration is near the corner of Sprague Avenue and Benton Avenue. At times, areas mostly affected are parts of Sprague Avenue, Academy Avenue, East Avenue, all towards the northeast and the side streets, Lafayette Avenue, Prospect Avenue near Turo College, Jackson Avenue, and all the streets in between, Charles Street, Myrtle Avenue, Lower Grand Avenue, Railroad Avenue, East Main, 2 and down to Bradner Avenue towards the east. I have been tracking this rancid, rotten-smelling odor for over eight months when I entered into my home in the winter with the windows closed and the smell was unbearable. And just a reminder that air pollution is number eight on the killers list. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, reports of the department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just wrapping up our summer season in our downtown with the Business Improvement District and the city events, our summer concert series, our Thursday night series, Stars and Stripes, our outdoor movies and so forth. We've had throughout the weeks downtown, over 10,000 people come into these events. Capped it off with the run for downtown a couple of weeks ago. They had well over 1,000 people, it was spectators and participants, so it was a great, all-around summer season and it was a lot of other events I know going out on throughout the city as well. We're ramping up for our holiday season and also at the Paramount Theater, Eileen, I know who's behind the camera here, has done a tremendous job in putting together our 2016 Harathon Weekend for Halloween and also our fall classic movie listings. It's already on social media, have reached over 18,000 folks, I guess, out there in the social media world. So we're looking forward to a good movie series and live series coming up as well. This evening, we had a community development agency. We're getting ready to put out for rehab the six homes that we've targeted for our homeownership program. Also, don't forget, we are still taking applications for housing rehab grants and loans through our community development office. And please check out our website or give us a call for information. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Good evening. Just a reminder to everybody that this Saturday is our annual inspection parade, 157th. Lineups at 2:00, step-offs at 3:00 on Highland Avenue. Hope everybody got their email, hope you guys can make it if you can. Friday night, 6:00, City Hall is our inspection night. We go around inspecting all three firehouses and members. That starts at 6:00. We'll leave here at City Hall at 6:00. And then tomorrow night is the white hat party, 6:00 again at American Legion. Hope you all can make it. It's always a good time. It's a busy week, but it's a good time for everybody. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Fire Chief. Thank you, Chief. Police chief? Acting chief?
Good evening. I have nothing for the council tonight unless you have any questions for myself.
Any question for Alvin Kleiner?
I've seen a real increase in complaints about the number of ATVs and those little motorcycles screeching down the streets, blowing through stop signs and stuff. Are we getting any closer to being able to do anything about them or?
Yes, you are correct. We are receiving numerous complaints on that and we have dedicated officers to try to combat that. We do have some leads on where they are coming from and as recent as today, I've had officers respond back to me with what they are finding out on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. VPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. We'll start with the, well, it's all good news, thank God. Septage, septic hauler revenue for this month, $67,000 from the wastewater treatment plant. Again, I just keep updating the public and the elected officials of how we can utilize our infrastructure to generate revenue for the city and to try to pay back our debt and to try to, again, keep our infrastructure updated and improved to support all the incoming activities into the city of Middletown, which we are very proud of. Sterling Street sewer Phase 2, the construction is going to start. The mayor has signed the contract with Sunup Enterprises and the work is going to be starting relatively soon. The, I don't know, the mayor might report more on it, but we did receive almost a million-dollar grant from EFC for the black dirt sewer line, which is basically, you may recall, some things that, you know, hopefully it's all behind us now, but the issues that we had with the school district, when the new, when the new school got constructed to replace trolley, there's a, there's tied to it, an upgrade for the sewer line, and we did get a million-dollar from the state revolving fund as a grant. However, the cost of the project is about $3.5 million, the estimated cost. So we will be doing some value engineering to try to minimize the cost, but hopefully we can proceed with that project because it's very important to upgrade that sewer line. Amshur area drainage in there, we started replacing the culverts on the adjacent to the railroad tracks and we started with Chestnut and then we're going to go down to Birch and that will improve the drainage in that location. Another, you know, another issue is the roof for City Hall will be replaced late. We're going to be meeting with the contractor tomorrow and deciding when the starting date is. Hopefully it's going to be early next week. There will be asbestos abatement and everything will be done in accordance with Department of Labor. We will have a third-party monitor in there to monitor the air and most of the work is going to be done at night in there, especially with demolition, in order to minimize any disruption for city activities. The side door adjacent to or across from First Federal and saving that whole area is going to be taken out for construction, so it's not, that door will not be available except for emergency access. And, you know, our reservoirs there are about 82% full capacity right now. You know, we really could use some rain. We haven't had any rain so far. The whole year has been really minimal amount of rain we've been having, so hopefully we will be able to, hopefully some rain will come down soon to help us out. All the hurricane is taking, is occurring on the east coast, nothing here, so hopefully we'll get something soon. Any questions?
You're not hoping for a hurricane, are you?
Well, less than hurricane.
All right. Any question for Alvin and John Francois?
Yes. Commissioner, as far as Hampshire, when are we going to pave that road? Because I received a couple of phone calls. Residents want to know when the road is going to be paved. I know you just started doing the work last week, but...
Oh, the paving on top of the culverts have been replaced?
Correct.
We just replaced one of them. Tomorrow, we're going to be doing the second one. So in short order, once we're done, you know, next week, we're going to pave, we're going to pave Chestnut and this way it will allow the trench to settle somewhat, but we're going to keep it topped off so it's not, it's not, you know, it's not gouge on the road or pot hole. So we'll keep it topped off until it's time to pave it. Hopefully next week, early next week, we can pave it.
Okay.
But you've got to allow it time to settle, otherwise, you know...
Correct. Thank you.
Alvin Kleiner?
Commissioner, I had people ask me, when we do the Phase 2 project, as you improve the drainage there and the flow, is that going to increase the flow that goes through Chinong Street and those culverts that have been an issue and where we did the dredging? Does it merge there and come through the same?
Phase 2 is sanitary sewer, not storm sewer. Phase 2 is sanitary sewer.
It's completely sanitary sewer, so...
Yeah, yeah, just wastewater, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. Treasurer?
All I have to report is that we've started the '17 budget process and all the department heads have submitted their initial report. We haven't had a chance to analyze them yet. They're all due Friday and they're all in, I'm happy to say. And as soon as we pull them together, we'll get a first look.
Any question for Don? Thank you, Don. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening. A little bit of business real quick with summer ending. I just wanted to give some quick revenue numbers. War Memorial Pool brought in $19,500 this summer. That's basically at a dollar a pop. It's $3 for adults. Our other two pools together brought in $5,600. So you see the attendance that we're getting out of that pool. Of course, now we have a parking problem, but we're going to start working on that. You'll have a resolution there. You'll see tonight, the Michael and Todd Corn from the Corns family, from Corns Campground, with the passing of their mother and their father here in the past two years. They came in, they gave us a check for $1,000 in which they wanted 500 to go to Middletown Cares for the school supply drive and 500 to go to camp scholarships to pay for kids to go to camp. So we want to thank the Corn family for that generous donation. I know it's going to make their parents very happy looking down upon us. Our fall brochures are out. We'll get them out into the schools. They're also online. You can get them off the website. You can hit Facebook and also find that. We have a lot of events coming up. The Touch a Truck event's coming up, September 24th. It'll be down by the farmer's market. It's from 11:00 to 1:00. It's mostly city vehicles. A lot of the city department heads collaborate with us and we have a lot of city vehicles down there. And also, last year, this was a big hit, the scarecrow contest. A lot of churches and businesses and clubs are getting together their scarecrow. I think they're actually due to Nicole and the Rec Department on September 14th. If you need more details about that, please call, but it is a great little community event. September 17th and 18th will be a martial arts tournament held down at Academy Avenue. I guess it's going to be a very big event. They have, there'll be live streaming, it'll be televised, and we're looking forward to hosting them. They've been in the building quite a bit, so that should be very interesting and something to see. If anybody wants any more information, if they just call the Recreation Department, we can also help them with that. Soccer starts September 17th as well as fall cheerleading, so people should register. This is the last week. Preschool starts on Monday. We have two full classes and a waiting list. So things are going very well. And the last point I'll hit on revenue with our small increase to camps, with the pools being very active this summer, with the police academy being something new, our revenue was over $50,000 up from last year at this time. So good things are happening. So, any questions?
Any question for Chris? Alvin Kleiner?
I don't know if I should ask you, but any update on the skate park that you know?
I think we're very close to picking a contractor. Mr. Gertin was looking into a couple of things and then the committee was going to reconvene.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chris. Corporation Council? Any question for Corporation Council? Thank you, Rich. City Clerk?
Just checked the website for road closings for this weekend is the Fireman's Parade, which is on, starts on Highland Avenue. I know lineup is at 2:00, 2:00 PM and step-off is at 3:00 and that will go all the way down to Thrall Park. So please check the website for road closings on that. Also, till next Tuesday, the 13th, is the primary and all the polls in Middletown will be open and you could call our office or check the website for where you will be voting. And that's all I have this evening.
Question for John? Thank you, John. Public hearing?
Okay, we have two public hearings tonight. One is the public hearing on proposed two-lot subdivision for 29 to 35 North Street and 15 to 25 East Main Street. I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice of hearing hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 6th, on as near 8:00 PM as possible, Common Council Chamber, 2nd floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision for 29 to 35 North Street and 15 to 25 East Main Street, tax map designation Section 31, Block 7, Lot 14, and Section 31, Block 7, Lot 13. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. And this was published in the Times Held Record on August 22nd and August 23rd and also on the city website.
Okay, this time a public hearing is now open?
Good evening, Rich Gertin, Corporation Council. Just as backdrop on this, there are some positions out there that a government is not subject to its own subdivision or zoning ordinances, but in cases like this, we often feel it's a good idea to bring this out to the public and follow the procedure, even though I'm not sure that legally we have to, but we do it anyway. So this subdivision involves the old Tompkins Building and the parking lot attached to it on East Main Street. In essence, what is existing now are three separate lots. One lot consists of the Tompkins Building itself with a piece of the municipal parking lot over on East Main Street and then on either side of the municipal parking lot are two small lots that the city also owns. So, the Tompkins Building we purchased some years ago, but as you know, it's been vacant and has been diminishing in its quality over the last number of years. We did put out a request for proposals to develop the purchase and develop the building and we did receive and review those and we now have a contract of sale with a successful proposer. As part of that, we are, we decided to subdivide the parcels so that we are taking those three lots and essentially reconfiguring them. So now the Tompkins Building will be on Lot 1 and on Lot 1 will be the building itself and approximately six parking, room for six parking spaces out of the municipal lot. That will be the configuration of Lot 1. Lot 2 will take the rest of the parking lot and the other two lots that comprise part of the parking lot and they will now be combined into one Lot 2. Our assessor's happy about that. She always likes to see lots combined where you can and that just makes it simpler and neater and more appropriate. Also, as part of the subdivision and to assist the party that's going to develop the building, we provide on the subdivision map for an easement for ingress and egress to and from the building out onto East Main Street. So that will run with the land and go to the developer when we consummate the, do the closing on the transaction. So the whole purpose of the subdivision was to allow us to develop the Tompkins Building in accordance with the RFP and the successful proposer and also to kind of clean up the lot area for our own municipal parking area. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any question from the public? Any question from the council? Our motion to close the public hearing? Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Racozum, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
Okay, we have a second public hearings for the purpose of considering a request by Frontier Communications of New York for a cable franchise to offer cable video service for the city of Middletown. And I will read the public hearing notice that the city of Middletown, New York, will hold a public hearing on September 6th, 2016, at 8:00 PM at City Hall, 16 James Street, Middletown, New York, for the purpose of considering a request by Citizens Telecommunications Company of New York, doing business as Frontier Communications of New York, Frontier Communications, for a cable franchise to offer cable video service in the city of Middletown. A copy of the proposed franchise agreement may be inspected at the office of the city clerk, Room 12, City Hall, 16 James Street, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM or on the city website or at the offices of Frontier Communication. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed franchise agreement and this is by the order of the common council. This was published in the Times Held Record on August 22nd and August 23rd and also on the city website.
It's time the public hearings now open? Good evening?
Good evening. Good evening again and thank you all very much for your time and consideration this evening. I'm Deb Bogdansky, General Manager with Frontier Communications, overseeing our properties here in the Hudson Valley. We're very excited to be bringing this application forward to the city of Middletown. It's an opportunity to provide a competitive alternative and a new product that we're very excited about here to the city residents in Middletown. Nothing like a choice to our consumers, absolutely. Many of you are familiar already with Frontier. We have a legacy of serving this community since 1895, dating all the way back to when we were the Orange County Telephone Company and we're very proud of the service that we've been able to provide over the years. We continue to put our customers first. We continue to be engaged locally, providing a local point of contact as well as our many employees. Here in the Hudson Valley, we have just over 300 employees that we do hire and work with here, many of them located here in the city of Middletown, for example. We are also very committed and focused on our veterans workforce. When we look at the company as a whole today, in addition to the new products and services, you can see that we now provide service in over 29 states and that's a visual of how it looks across the country. And when we talk a little bit about some of those, as I mentioned, we do serve 29 states. Currently today, our state headquarters are in Rochester, New York. We also have our corporate headquarters right across the state in Norwalk, Connecticut. But tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our video product and services and give you some of the highlights and answer any questions and concerns that you may have about Frontier coming in and being able to offer a competitive franchise opportunity to the city. And I'll turn it over at this point to Steve Crosby, Senior Vice President with our regulatory team, to talk about those.
Thank you, Deb, and good evening. Thank you for your time and we'll be swiftly moving through this because I know you've seen this presentation for the most part before. So Frontier currently provides service, the FIO service in a number of those suburbs that you see up on the screen up there, from Seattle, Portland, through Southern California. And we're hoping to bring our new product and services to here to Middletown. Some of the product advantages for the advantage, for the Vantage TV service are we're using a media room product that has been around for a number of years. More than 16 million subscribers use this across the US. Some of the other pieces that are, that I like about our product is that you can record multiple, multiple TV shows with one single recorder. We're using next-generation software for this, for the service and also you have an interactivity with some of the social media functions that people like to use on a regular basis that you can use with your TV service. This is a screenshot of what the equipment looks like, both with the TV, the channel changer and as well as the set-top box. And then again, here are some of the pictures that you would experience when you use the TV and the service, the instant channel changer, a multi-view screenshot, as well as video on demand. As part of our services, we offer video on demand library that people can, can go into and watch TV shows, they can watch movies, first-run movies. Next slide. Here is a visual guide to what you would experience if you in fact were using the Vantage TV product. The guide is intuitive. It's something you can use and find the TV shows that you're looking for instantaneously. This is called our channel peek, where you can be watching one show and view other channels at the same time to decide which shows you want to watch if you want to skip back and forth. Now, unified messaging, unified searching allows you to put in a word for a TV show or a movie and it'll bring up anything related to that. So here, we have something that says Iron. There's actor Jeremy Irons, there's Iron Man 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and you can pull that up and see what you'd like to watch and then press that and then you'd have instant access to it. And then again, here is a list of, let's say, your favorite media lists of shows. The hot TV shows, some of the, maybe your children want to watch special shows. They're all built into this and you can then program it and then watch it. And then here is our over-the-top service where you would be able to use Amazon Prime, Hulu, Netflix, and you can go to those and put in your account number and get the films that you regularly like to watch. Excellent. And so what does it mean to you, to your community, your residents? And what it really is, is it offers an alternative, a choice to your, the current incumbent charter. It also will not impact your residents at all. When you put in a system, many a time you have to dig up streets and such. None of that will be done in this situation. All the work will be done in our central office and at our remote sites. So it's something that shouldn't impact no one in your community. It also gives you another revenue stream with franchise fees coming from the new customers we hope to get over time. Excellent. So what it gives the residents here in Middletown are options, choice, competition, and additional investment by Frontier Communications in your community. So what we're asking for and what we're looking for to do is providing service here. We hope that you would consider approving the application and the franchise. And again, it's all about choice and competition. We're willing to fight it out with our competitors in the marketplace and hopefully to get the customers that we think we can get.
Anyone from the public have any comments or questions?
Pat Fode. And I'm with this outfit 100%. I just got my Time Warner Cable bill today and it went from $131 to $181. That's a $50 jump. And I got to thank the mayor and the council and everybody for trying to get some more competition in here because either that, I'm not going to watch any TV. I only watch about five channels as it is. But I'm with this. I'll sign up right now if they're ready.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the public?
Gertin Corporation Counsel again. I believe what was sent to the members of the council was a letter from Frontier Communications Attorney. I want to make sure you all received that. That should go in the record. John, were you able to send out to the council the letter from Charter Communications?
Yes, I did.
All right. Charter Communications is the parent company of Time Warner Cable and they sent a letter today to me via email, which was then distributed to the members of the council. I'd asked that be put in the record as well as their comments on the application by Frontier. I just wanted to note for the record that, that they did receive it. They received notice of the public hearing. There was some question raised by them last time as to whether they had actually received Frontier's application and/or whether they received notice of the public hearing. I believe that they did, but to be absolutely on the safe side, we scheduled another public hearing and gave them the opportunity to make a submission if they wanted to. They chose not to be here tonight, but they did choose to submit something in writing and that's what was distributed to all of you and I was, again, would ask that be put in the record.
Okay.
But competition is a good thing. Thank you.
Anyone from the council? Alvin Kleiner?
Mr. Gertin, before you, before you sit down, if I could ask you, because we basically have dueling letters here and I know the last public hearing, I asked a lot of questions about all those federal requirements and the level playing field and the build-out and, you know, the second provider and what they have to provide and franchise fees and public access and all the issues that Charter is raising and saying, well, if they do that, then we're going to change our agreement and I know we're not ready to vote on this, but are we going to have a revised agreement? Are we going to have any answers to Charter's questions? Are we going to have some guidance on? I mean, we're all in favor of the competition and I've been begging for people to come in here for many, many years, long before I was on the council and I think that's how I met Chairman Rodriguez, asking for, you know, public access and what we can do. But I'd like some kind of guidance on a lot of the legal issues that they raised or whether... or whether, that, I mean, we sort of get the reply that, well, the Public Service Commission will be the final arbiter on this, on whether there are federal preemptions, et cetera.
But there will be, there would, there would be an agreement between our community and Frontier. Obviously, what they've submitted to us is a draft, it's not the final product.
Okay.
Although they might like it to be, but...
We agree it's not.
Yeah, not the final product. And, and there are some things in there, like there's a question as to what the franchise fee would be. I suspect that's going to be the same as cable, you know, the maximum 5%. Okay, good, we have that commitment already. But I think as far as some of those technical aspects as to the build-out, that's something, we have representatives of Frontier right here, I think that would be a good question to pose directly to them.
Okay. I, I know you did reply, Charter is saying that you're only going to build out, you only have to serve like some 35% or something, and it seemed to me you were proposing serving a lot more than that, but, and, and I don't know how that issue gets resolved.
So if I could start to detour from your question briefly.
Sure.
So the points that Charter raised in their letter, we agree with, as the gentleman just said, the franchise fee would be the same, that the PEG, Public Education, the government, is exactly the same what Charter's offering. So all of those things are distractors, in my view, because we, we, we agree with that, we agree that those pieces need to be built into that contract, and we're willing to say that tonight. It's the build-out requirement that we would build to 35% of the community within two years. And so that's our agreement, that is the market-based solution that has been approved in the past by the FCC and others, and we're willing to do that. We, we, we believe we can go right through that and go further, but we're saying, at the very least, that, remember, we have to go back and try to get customers, because Charter has, has the marketplace right now. So we're going to have to arm wrestle and incentivize people to change and be competitive to bring the service here to your community.
Yeah.
To your residents. So if you put all those other points aside that Charter raises, the issue is the build-out, and that's what we're willing to do, and we believe, over time, we'll, we'll go past 35% on beyond, because we think we can get customers, because people have been asking for our competitive service, our competitive service like ours for a long time.
And you already signed on to two different towns, right, in Orange County?
So, two weeks ago, it was Goshen, and we have a number of other public hearings tonight around your state, and more coming up in the next couple of weeks. So we would love to get your vote tonight, we can work out the deals with, with your attorney, the, the final details about the 5%, which is what we're going to do, the PEG piece, we're going to do. I mean, so all of those things are, we're committed right now to do. And the build-out piece is something that we will, we will agree to at the 35% within two years. We believe we can go past that level based on our competitive offerings.
Okay, that's, that's sort of what they said, we're at the 35%. Then you may go beyond that, that it's permissive, but there's no requirement that you go beyond that, and we'd certainly like to see you offer it to more people in the community. You can't get the business unless you're offering it to a wider percentage of the community, so...
You're, you're exactly right, and we do want that, because that, if we can get there and people start subscribing to our service, that means we're doing the right thing, and we're giving people an alternative that's competitive, and people then can enjoy our service, which we think, which we think is a superior service.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else on the council? Okay, motion to close the public hearing? Alden McCasum, seconded by? Alden John Francois, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed, thank you. Okay, petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Mayor?
Give us a minute for the computer. Switch over.
Bye.
What a day.
Nobody likes monopoly, that's for sure.
You can start talking if you want.
Counsel president's taking Mr. Massey's position today.
Wow.
I don't have much to report, other than to advise you, the, on the $10 million grant, we have submitted our names to the state for the local advisory committee. I believe we have submitted 11 names. As soon as those are confirmed by the appropriate state agency, the advisory committee will start working on assisting us and the state and the planning operation BFJ and the development of the plan. Part of that process will be including input from you as members of the common council, and the local advisory committee is made up of educators, downtown business people, residents, and a pretty wide array of people within, within the community. So, other than that, I have nothing to report. Any questions?
Question to mayor?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mark S. Alderman, Aldman Burr. Alden McCasum?
I do have some visual aids this evening, so if you can point your attention to the screens. I was, I was away on vacation for the last meeting, so I, I would be remiss to not thank everyone for a night out tonight, since this is the first opportunity I've had to do so. So I'd like to thank Eileen in advance for taking these pictures at the event and for helping put together this slideshow. So we had a, I want to say the evening was a huge success, I'm going to go ahead and call it that. Our fireworks show was fantastic, we had a great crowd, great weather, everything worked. We had a positive message, a ton of police community interaction, dancing, music, and fun. And I'd like to take the time to thank Chris Brinkerhoff, Detective Jackie Welch, got that right, Lieutenant Adwan Su, Detective Jackie Welch, congrats on that, John Bianchi, Kelly Ocasio, and every volunteer and helping hand that made the night a success. My thanks to Chief Bethencourt and all our officers for being the kind of department that cares for the community that they serve. We honor the Orange County Extreme Girls 12 and Under softball team for earning their trip to the World Series in Florida, where they performed very well. We also honor Detective Jackie Welch with the Rec Department's Gold Star Award for her outstanding service to our community. We had over 45 service groups, organizations, and businesses at the event, which really, I think, people need to understand, shows the buy-in in our community by not only the businesses, the people, but every group that's here. They're, they're, they want to be a part of what we do, and it's a great feeling. I'd like the time, take the time now, to once again thank our 2016 sponsors for their generosity, without which there would be no night out. So I'll do it one more time, so we can make sure to thank them well. Our gold sponsors were Val Bruni Plumbing and Clark Patterson Lee. Our silver sponsors, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, Star Collision, and Pupo Plumbing. Our bronze sponsors, Tony Baffes, Mid-City Transit, Recap, Steve Dodd Plumbing, Sierra Automotive, Compass Motors, Marshall &amp; Sterling, Kewanis, Todd Lyons Paving, and Middletown Honda. I want to thank you again for continuing to be a part of our community and making this night possible. I think it's important for all of us. And as, I'm done for the night out now, but I do want to mention that this past Friday, my kids also went to help the Middletown Cares stuff the bus down at the recreation department, and stuffed the backpacks with supplies, loaded up a bus, and delivered, I'm not even sure how many, Chris, you can tell me, hundreds?
Probably 400 backpacks.
Yeah, that was a lot.
Eighteen boxes.
Supplies. It was, it was a big overhaul, and they went to all the schools, and I just want to say thank you to Kelly and Middletown Cares, and all those great kids who showed up and time and again give their time and energy to our community. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, nice job. Alden Johnson?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Alden Witt?
Thank you very much. First off, congratulations, Chris, on a successful year and, you know, bringing in a lot of money. I know that's not all of what we're about, obviously, but we don't want to lose, that's for sure. And I can tell you that this is what the brochure looks like, so if you're at your school, please grab one. I can tell you, as a parent, my daughter has been involved in several of these programs, and they are, they're fantastic. So I highly recommend it. School is now open, and today was the first day, so please be aware of our youngsters and some that are not so young, who are on our roads and on our sidewalks, and especially that Wickham Avenue-Wisner intersection. Please don't be in such a hurry that you have to make that left to get onto 211 and, so that nobody gets hurt. I mean, there are three traffic guards up there right now, it's a very, very difficult situation, and be patient. It's, it's just not worth having a situation by being in a hurry, so. And finally, the Middletown-Port Jervis football game is this Friday, September 9th, at the Fowler Field Stadium complex at, at 7:00 PM. So we have the bell, and I think that we want to keep it. So we'd love to see you, there's plenty of seating available. Thank you.
Alden Kleiner?
Thank you. Next Monday, September 12th will be, at 7:00 PM, will be our second ward constituents meeting, right here in council chambers. Next Tuesday is the neighborhood watch meeting. That's Tuesday, the 13th, that's also at 7:00 PM. Lieutenant Adwan Su will be there. And also, we'll have, old woman Ram Cassun said, we'll have some people from the district attorney's office here, so please come out and take part in the discussion. Addressing quickly, because I, I had information from constituent two about what Chief Winter said about the odors, and that is being addressed, that's being looked into, and, and hopefully we'll have some resolution to that. Thank you. The fire parade, I hope everybody comes out, it looks like it's going to be good weather. And finally, congratulations to Middletown for beating Cornwall, Mitty's really surprised everybody, and that's great. And when we finish the inspections on Friday, I hope we have time to, fire inspections, I hope we have time to make it over and at least see the second half of the game. So get out there and root for keeping that eerie bell here. Thank you.
Alden John Francois?
Thank you, and nothing this evening.
Okay, new business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr. This is to authorize the treasurer to place $500 in the current trust agency account designated for summer camp scholarships for Middletown Cares and 500 in supply drive.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Alden McCasum. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, and this is to add no parking signs on Frank Shoreway directly behind 26 Winchester Avenue across from the Lyons Shelter.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Witt. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, to authorize Police Officer Daniel DeYoung to attend the reality-based instructor course to be held in Orskine, New York, from Sunday, September 18th through Friday, September 23rd, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, to authorize Police Officer Patricia Duramus to attend Train the Trainer for Active Shooter 1, to be held in Latham, New York, from Monday, September 12th through Friday, September 16th, 2016, from Wednesday, end Wednesday, September 21st through Thursday, September 22nd, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, to authorize Police Officer Patrick Cunningham to attend the National Annual Police Dog One Competition to be held in Gloucester Township, New Jersey, from Sunday, September 25th through Thursday, September 29th, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois, to close a portion of Montgomery Street for, for, to hold the Second Annual Harvest Festival and Trunk or Treat Event, Saturday, October 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, in conjunction with the Middletown Farmers Market.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois, seconded by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, to authorize for the city to accept a donation of a sculpture known as Vaquell Resolve from Eric Stein, and authorization for the mayor to sign an easement for the placement of the sculpture on Midland Avenue Extension, and pay for the cost of the installation of the sculpture in the easement area.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman McCasum. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, to transfer $7,000 within the 2016 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department, to cover costs of replacing brakes and pads on the backhoe, and the remaining funds will be used for unforeseen repairs to park vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman McCasum. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, to declare the common council lead agency and a negative declaration for a two-lot subdivision for 29 to 35 North Street and 15 to 25 East Main Street.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman McCasum. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, to approve the two-lot subdivision for 29 to 35 North Street and 15 to 25 East Main Street.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman McCasum. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by old woman Graham Cassoon to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $9,800 within the Paramount 2016 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman McCleiner, seconded by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign and submit the Danzy Grant Programs Guarantee Questionnaire for the Woolworths Project that has been selected by Senator Bonnison for a grant through the State and Municipal Facilities Capital Program in the amount of $125,000.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to accept a donation from Run for Downtown Organization and to authorize the construction of a permanent stage at 9 to 15 North Street, which is the Run for Downtown Park by the Run for Downtown Organization, subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Public Works.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman John Frassois, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Frassois to authorize the mayor to sign an approval for professional services by Clark Patterson Lee for the County Route 78 project and transfer $30,160 from the general fund to fund the project.
Resolution by Aldman John Frassois, seconded by Aldman McCleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $108,998 within the Police Department 2016 budget to cover the shortage in overtime.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $108,998 within the Police Department 2016 budget to cover the shortage in overtime.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to authorize the treasurer to transfer $2,368.71 within the Police Department 2016 budget to cover the cost to purchase telephone headsets for the Police Department dispatchers that will work with the upgraded phone system.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman John Frassois, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer $7,185.60 within the Police Department 2016 budget to cover the unanticipated cost of web AVL subscription cost for the DATA 9/11 for 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman John Frassois, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer $7,185.60 within the Police Department 2016 budget to cover the unanticipated cost of webAVL subscription cost for the DATA 9/11 for 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman John Frassois, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Frassois to authorize the purchase of a new vehicle for the downtown cleanup and transfer $10,000 within the DPW 2016 budget for this vehicle.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Frassois, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer $7,000.160 within the Police Department 2016 budget to cover the shortage in overtime.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
I thought you were going to say audit, I'm sorry.
Look at the rest of us.
Resolution from the floor?
Okay, Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited.
No. No.
Aldman Witt?
I'd like to make a resolution to agree with the mayor's appointment of Timothy Welch as to the Civil Service Commission to take the place of Fran Emilio.
Okay, resolution by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Second, Aldman Johnson.
We had a public planning committee meeting earlier this evening and heard a request for a subdivision. I would like to offer a resolution that we schedule a public hearing on September 20th on or about 8:00 PM to entertain public comments on the subdivision request by Highland Hills LLC.
Resolution by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman McCleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman McCleiner, seconded by Aldman Burr. Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Frassois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
George.